All right, I'd like to call the bill to board trustees to order. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. Next is clutch allegiance.
Clutch allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And four is public appearance, is public's opportunity to speak on any subject not specific to agenda item. And five is discussed and considered a regular board meeting from eight twenty to meeting minutes. Is there any discussion, corrections, appeals or motions?
I just had number thirteen, so three to be in, open session at five fifty-three. Can we change that to eight fifty?
Oh, certainly.
And then for number nine, five, Dear Robby EMS, is the additional revenue from the possible partnership with Stone Hospital, is that going to the commission or to Dear Robby EMS itself?
It's going to the EMS service.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because in the minutes it says the commission, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve of those changes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Have they turned it all over to favor?
Aye.
You may oppose. You abstained?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Presentation to the board. And it's here for Baker Tilly.
Do you need me to cut out a microphone?
There's one right below you.
It'll, it picks up. It'll just pick up your voice.
Oh, perfect. All right. I like that better. Okay. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Amanda Blomberg with Baker Tilly. We work on the villages audit every year. And what I'm going to do is present the financial highlights from the 2018 audit and financial statements. You probably have some documents in front of you. One being the financial statements themselves. That's probably the thickest document with a cover on it. That's a pretty large document for a small government, and so I'll try to boil that down into a few highlights. You also have the tax incremental district financial statements. These highlight just the TIP information alone and helps with the reporting that is required by the Department of Revenue. And then there's a communication to those charged with governance and management, which is an ancillary document to the audit and basically talks about things, you know, internal controls, any recommendations, required communications are also in here as well. So I won't spend a lot of time on that. Certainly if you have any questions, please let me know. We can discuss as we go, or you can save them for the end, whatever you prefer. I did hand out this little graph package that is a landscape document. I do have, I think, one or two extra copies that I, if anyone didn't get a copy that would like one. Yep, so this one. All right. So that's what I'm going to talk from here. Like I said, it really just takes the information that we feel is important in the financial statements and boils it down to just kind of a very summarized and graphical look for you so that we can just, you know, focus on what's important here. So if you look at page one, we start with talking about the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village, and we look at fund balance, which is essentially the equity, your assets minus your liabilities, what's left over in reserves. And so fund balance in the general fund and all funds get broken down into different categories depending on how liquid those assets are. So there are certain assets that we can't liquidate on demand. That's because they may be related to, you know, long-term type receivables. And that's really the bulk of the 189,000 that you see here. So we have some advances, about 148,000 that go, that are owed by the TIPS. Those TIPS can't pay those back on short notice. About 33,000 of that is related to prepaid items. Our money is gone, so we can't liquidate something we've already paid for. So that's kind of the thought there with the non-spendable fund balance. The next category with some, with a number is the assigned fund balance, and that is fund balance that is kind of earmarked for a specific purpose. So the water utility pays a payment in lieu of tax to the general fund every year. It's kind of like a property tax on their water system. That's kind of on the same schedule as a tax rule. So the intention there is that that 323,000 is meant to be used in next year's budget. You'll see that every year in the financial statements, so it's something that is new. But it just is based, it changes over time as the tax rates change and the water utility assets also change. The final number here, which is the largest, is the unassigned, and that's 1,087,000. So what that means is unassigned fund balances free and clear to be used to pay for current bills. So being that that's the biggest chunk, about 68% according to the graph below, that shows that the majority of the fund balance in the general fund is available to be used. If you go to the next page, this takes your unrestricted fund balance. So this is a combination of your assigned and unassigned fund balances added together. And if you look in the 2018 column, you see those two add up to about 1.4 million dollars. When we compare that to the general fund's annual expenditures, we get about 32%. So what that means is that you have funds on hand that are within your control that make up about 32% of your annual costs. You can get through 32% of your year, assuming no additional revenues. There's some benchmark data below in the graph that, you know, talks about how this compares. And so the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, is kind of a helpful organization to municipalities, recommends not having less than two months on hand. So that's about 17%. The village itself has a policy with an acceptable range of 20 to 30%. It's a good idea to have that policy in place so we kind of know what we're shooting for. Right now, you're just a little bit over that, which is, you know, not a, not a bad place to be. So you're meeting your policy, have a little excess, that way you have a little bit of room to give here as well going into the future. Any questions about that? You can see over time, it was as high as 37% and as low as about 24.5% too. So it's generally been within that range or even higher.
Amanda, what are the green dots referencing?
So the green dots are comparison to other clients that are of similar size. So it's a median, so it's like the exact middle number when we compare with similar-sized clients, where they sit. So they're in the thirty, you know, the thirties range there, which is not unusual. Smaller municipalities will generally have a little bit higher percentage just because when you think of, well, what would we need, you know, reserves for? It might be projects or emergencies, and those things may take up more of your annual expenditures than what a larger municipality. Any other questions? Great. The next couple of pages talk about the general obligations debt outstanding. So GO debt is secured by a tax levy, so that's what is generally used to pay it. Looking at the 2018 column, you'll see that there's just over $20 million in GO debt outstanding between the village and utility funds. 16 million belongs to the village, 4 million belongs to the utilities. With this said though, about 12 million of that 16 million is related to TIPS. So in, in theory, the TIPS are supposed to be generating the, the money to pay back the debt, you know, in the amount of about 12 million dollars. So about 80% of that is really non-lebbed debt. So that's, like, that's a good metric to be aware of as we're looking at some of the other ratios here. So if we keep going down that 2018 column, there is a debt, statutory debt capacity that every municipality has. It equals 5% of that municipality's equalized valuation. So of course that grows over time as your equalized value goes up, so does your debt capacity. And so when we take 5% of that, your debt capacity is just over 37 million dollars. Your, about, your, or your outstanding debt is at 54% of that debt limit. Again, over time, back in 14, it was as high as 61%, dropped to 52 in 16, and it's just been right around that level since 17 and 18. The metrics here or the comparisons are kind of just based on the makeup of whatever your debt looks like and what your growth is. A lot of municipalities with growing TIP districts where you're borrowing early on and then paying it back will have a little bit higher ratio, you know, over 50%. I've seen 60 and even into 70s sometimes. For stable communities that don't have a lot of growth, I would recommend sticking around that 50% mark. So you guys are right around that 50% mark and still, you know, have a growing community with a lot of TIP debt outstanding, that's going to be repaid with those increments. The next page takes a second look at the, the debt situation and compares how much you're paying in principal and interest per year to your non-capital expenditure. And so the reason we do this is try to make your annual expenditures a little bit more comparable from year to year, and then we say, well, how much are you paying in debt? It's kind of a, you know, a, you know, are you overextending yourself? And, and right now, we're at 24%. The recommendation that we see from bond rating agencies is to try not to let that go over 20%. And a lot of growing communities, we do see that over 20% because of the active TIP districts and the amount of debt that's being paid back by those districts. So again, the village has consistently been just slightly over that 20%, but again, I don't, you know, I, I don't see any concern with this. I think even the village's bond rating was just upgraded not that long ago as well. So obviously, they don't see an issue with it either. Any questions on the debt? All right. The next few pages trend out the revenues in the general fund, the debt service fund over time, over the last five years. And this is just interesting to see where things have moved over the last few years. And you'll see that, you know, with the graphs depicting the, the different revenues available here, by far and large, by, by, by far, the biggest revenue source is the tax levy. That's just, that's kind of natural in a very residential community like this. So we do have a few intergovernmental revenues and some other charges for services and that kind of thing, but those are relatively small comparisons to the tax levy as a whole. The next page is just a pie chart again depicting the various sources of revenue, the tax rule being about 74% of that. Again, the tax rule is being, is funding both the, the general fund and some of the debt service that is required to be paid for the village. Now seven and eight, pages seven and eight depict the same information for the expenditures over the last five years. And so again, we generally, you know, see fairly stable lines or lines that just, you know, kind of edge upward. We have a little bit of ups and downs going here, and that just relates to how the police department had been structured prior to the village taking it over completely and when it was shared with the town. So that was, that change was done in 2015, so that just kind of just moved the expenditures from one category to another. So you'll see public safety went up, and then the other, you know, which included your transfers out, went down. So they just kind of offset each other. Other than that, you know, there was a little bit of a dip in debt service back in 2016 in that it's just, you know, a result of whatever your repayment schedules were structured like for that year. You could have, you know, just a little bit of a break in, you know, your amortization schedules maybe that year, and then took out some new debt after that.
I think there's a refinancing.
Refinancing, okay. Thanks. Page eight then is that pie chart again breaking the various categories down. Pretty, pretty well spread out actually between public safety, public works, and debt service. I often see general government, which is administrative costs, a little bit higher in comparison, so in your case, it's a little bit lower at 11%, but otherwise, pretty, pretty well spread out among the big major categories. All right. The next few pages then talk about the utility funds. This is a lot of trending information. What we'll see here is at the top of page nine, you'll see the, the number of gallons sold by customer class. And so you see, you know, how much have we sold? Is it going up? Is it going down? You know, what are the reasons for that? We do see overall a trend of water conservation, you know, different appliances that just use less water now. Businesses will make efforts to ensure they aren't using as much water and not putting as much wastewater back into the system as a result. So we do see a lot of conservation efforts going on by both residences and businesses. The main thing that we want to see in your utilities though is that you're being able to support your operations and future capital projects, any, you know, improvements to your system by the rates that you have in place. So kind of this, this middle set of numbers where it shows operating revenues and expenses on the very left, we pay attention to this to make sure that, you know, you're generating enough revenue to cover everything. So right now, operating revenues were about 1.2 million, expenses were 860,000. If you look at the graph on your right, you'll see the blue lines, your revenues, it took a nice little hike up in 2017, and that was a result of a rate increase. Your expenses on the red line have remained, you know, pretty stable over time. So what this does is on the next page, you'll see the graph here is your rate of return. And so this is what we're trying to strive for in, in our earnings. And so our authorized rate of return by the Public Service Commission is 5.5%. You'll see over the last five years, we were pretty close to zero and even below zero one year. And now after that rate increase, it took us up into the 3% range. We still have some room to, to grow there, and so the goal is to get, you know, close to that 5.5% that's authorized. And, and that's ideally where you want to be in order to be able to, you know, generate enough revenues for, you know, again, your operations, your debt service, as well as any future improvements that you're making. Any questions? The next page is still the water utility. This talks about the availability of cash. So cash flows are important again for the utility as, you know, we want to ensure that there's enough cash being generated through the rate system in order to, to pay our bills. And so the ratio that we have here is how many months of unrestricted cash do we have? So when we say unrestricted cash, it's the cash accounts that we do not need to set aside to meet our bond clients' requirements. So the bonds will say you need to set aside so much money for your next debt payment, or you need to set aside money for future equipment or something like that. So this is money that's free and clear to be used, and you have almost a full year available of cash. And so that is, that is helpful. Generally, they, you know, the, the recommendation is to have about, you know, at least a billing cycle on hand or three months or so, depending on what your billing cycle is, but have, you know, a full year on hand. And that's helpful when it comes to making decisions about future projects. All right. I'm going to skip to the next page, which is, talks about some of the same information but for the sewer utility. There is no PSC regulation of the sewer utility, so we don't have a rate of return here. What we want to see though is that again, you're generating enough revenue through user charges that, you know, you're covering your expenses as well as your depreciation. Because the depreciation is a non-cash expense, so we want to ensure that, okay, are we, you know, covering the, the wear and tear on our system as well as what we have to pay out in cash? And so we're just above that right now. Operating revenues with a rate increase in 2018 were about 1.69 million, so close to 1.7 million with our expenses being about 1.45. So enough, there's some cash being generated there as well. The next page, 13, is again the sewer utility, talking about how much unrestricted cash is on hand. That took a nice little jump in 2018 with eight and a half months available. So that is sitting pretty well as well. Any questions on the utility? All right. The last page is just a very summarized page of each of the three TIP districts that were active in 2018. I understand there were more approved in 19, so we'll get to those next year around this time. But this just gives you an idea as to where each of them sit. What I like to do here is really pay attention to the, the calculation of net costs recoverable through TIP increments. It's kind of just about the date towards the bottom of the page. And what this tells us is how much debt do we have outstanding and compare that, do we have any fund balance on hand? And then we net those two. And so for example, TIP five, we have about $8 million we need to generate in tax increment to repay our debt outstanding. So, but if we look at how much increment we're generating for TIP five, which is a little, is the bottom number on that page or in that column, we're generating over a million dollars in increment every year. So that gives you an idea how long it'll take us, you know, to pay back that debt and are we on schedule? And I know you guys work with some financial advisors, so you know, you're cash flowing this out and projecting and, and ensuring that that's going to be met, so I'm not too worried about that. We do know that TIP six has been in a rough position for a number of years, and so we know that that's going to be, you know, eventually absorbed by the village as well as that debt that's outstanding. TIP seven again is sitting in pretty good shape, whereas generating 600,000 in increment every year and only has about a million and a half that needs to be used. So five and seven sitting pretty good, and you know, we knew, you know, saw that, you know, six was going to have some issues a while back, but in plans have been made for that. That is kind of the summary of, you know, what we think is important from the financial statements. Does anyone have any other questions on the, the numbers, the information itself, itself? The other document, the communication to those charged with governance and management, like I mentioned before, does talk about internal controls and some required communications with the governing body, so I just encourage you to read through this. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. We do talk about control, you know, situations, you know, segregation of duties and, and financial reporting and that kind of thing. Nothing of, of big concern in here. We just, you know, encourage boards that, you know, for our clients that do have segregation of duties, issues is just to ensure that the board has, you know, pretty good involvement in, you know, the review of the information that you see on a monthly or weekly basis. So if you have questions, you want to ask them, ensure that you're doing your diligence in most cases. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So clear, you can add any questions?
That's what I go for.
We have a little light reading due now.
Yeah. When you're, when you're having trouble sleeping. Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to item seven, unfinished business. Item seven A is discussed and considered to hold amendments in chapter 2.5 of the zoning related to 2017 Wisconsin X, 67, 2017 Wisconsin X, two, forty-three. This was two, made 20th meeting, so we're going to back up, look to get it off the table. Motion.
I want a motion to take it off the table.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further, is there then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe opposed? You abstained? Motion carries. All right, it's off the table, so now we can turn it back up. I think Lee took the action last time to investigate or something.
Yeah. Last evening, I sent you an email talking about the review of this language, and if either you didn't see it, didn't print it out, or need a copy, I have some extra copies for, for you, just in case. Essentially, after calling around and talking with staff and also talking with other municipal attorneys, I think that to simplify this, you can do one of three things. One is you can eliminate the language. First of all, the, the language that was eliminated by the state legislature was, it's called a statute. And so the difference is that at the state level, they're called statutes. At our level, it's called ordinances. The state action eliminated this statutory section from the state code. It did not however, take the next step to eliminate similar language that exists in many municipal codes. And that's the situation that we have. We have a language that's almost identical to that in the village code, and the question is, do we have to do anything as a result of the state action? And the answer is no. So then, the third thing is, do you, is, do you, if you don't have to take any action, but you want to take some action, can you? And the answer to that is yes, because this is strictly a village ordinance, and there are, there have been a variety of items that have come up over the course of time. I think I talked about changing the voting requirements. It's unusual that three-quarters is required in any place in the ordinances. Talking about from where you measure or how much land is involved, but again, you don't have to do anything. So have, there was a lot of discussion about this, and when you go through it, just to try to simplify it, I think that the board needs to decide, do we want to do anything? Do we want to do nothing? And if we want to do something, what is it that we want to do?
Okay. Lots of opportunity then.
Well, I'll make a motion to remove ordinance 325-110G regarding the protest.
A second.
Any discussion?
And so I just want to confirm that the recommendation was also from the planning, the plan commission?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's, that's correct. I, I forgot to include that in the, in the middle.
Okay. So the plan commission voted, it was unanimous, I believe, to remove it as well?
May have been six to one.
Yeah. I think there was an extension or?
I think Fred, Fred Schultz.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, Fred did.
Don't any changes to zoning ordinances require a public hearing?
Yeah, that was how it went to plan commission.
And that's when those plan commission made the, made their recommendation.
So that was the public hearing?
So what you're asking, should I, when we're going to, when there's a zoning change up for discussion that goes to the plan and that's considered a public hearing, you were wondering here, the public hearing for zoning changes? I just wanted to make sure I understood your question.
Well, my understanding is that any zoning changes require a public hearing, and I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we had the public hearing at the plan commission.
No, not to gum up the works, but... No, not to gum up the works, but that's what lawyers do. The only municipality that we're aware of that has done anything with this new language is Middleton, and what they did was, they added a public hearing in front of the village board. So...
But they, but they took away the three-quarters.
Right.
Majority of the law.
Right.
I guess I find it interesting that we've had so much public input against changing this, and the first thing we want to do is change it, so we're not going to listen to our constituents at this point?
To me, the protest position is for zoning changes. We have the comprehensive plan that already lays out the plan for zoning for all of the neighborhoods and potential neighborhoods. If our residents have concern about how it looks like it's going to be zoned, then there's specific processes for residents to follow around the comprehensive plan. I think this ordinance was put in place before we had this comprehensive plan need. Now we have it, so it's, everybody can see how we're planning to zone it. So, to protest a zoning change, it seems duplicative if we already have this comprehensive plan that shows exactly how we're going to zone.
So, why is Shady Grove not following the comprehensive plan?
I think all the professionals would say it is.
We do have a citizen that does want to speak on this. I don't know whether we're going to insert that, but probably now is a good time. Steve, are you here? Do you, do you want to speak on this? I guess you didn't circle either.
Um, I'll speak real briefly. I, I will put this in context, the reason I am here and have been here is a concern about a zoning change. My backyard abuts the farm golf course, and there has always been rumors that that's going to be developed. At one time, it wasn't going to be a concern because the village and the town and the county were in, had, were in deep negotiations in order to make that a parkland. But all of a sudden, somehow, the village of Shady Grove cut a deal with the current owner, so that was taken off the board. Currently, it's zoned RH, which does allow housing. Of course, the minimum lot size is 35 acres, which, as I look out over that land, I love that, because you're not going to put too many houses over there. If they, in fact, decide to go to multifamily housing or residential housing, it's going to go much higher than that, and that would have to go through a zoning change. And so, I would prefer to have some additional safeguards that if enough people in the area, whether that be the town people or the town and the village people object, and that, that was discussed at an earlier meeting, that enough, if enough people raise a concern about it, then it, there should be a higher standard, some, more than just a simple majority, either the six, either the two-thirds or the three-quarters. And so, that's, I raised it not just as a general procedural question, but in terms of the farm golf course, my own personal bias. And that's it. Thanks.
If I could just respond, Steve is a friend of mine and very knowledgeable, and I appreciate his input. I just want to clear up that the deal was going to be the village and the county were going to buy the farm, and then the county money disappeared at the time of deficits and whatever, and that's why the, the deal didn't go through. I don't think the town was really a part of it, but it wasn't a deal with the owners. They weren't actually very happy at the time, so...
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Steve? Can you make a discussion? All right. Go ahead. I was going to say, the, the options you gave, keeping some of the language, I mean, is there an option to decrease it from 75% to say 70, so you need five to two? Is that an option as well? Your research or...
Steve, I think when I was talking about the different percentages, I mean, I think you, you could change the percentages, and you could also change the voting. It's, you could do either, either one.
Yes, I'll just, so, as I think you speak for the speaking, the village has already approved the, we use the farm as an example, but that be residential, and part of the residential definition in the comprehensive plan is homes, and it says exactly what the lot size should be. Like, to, to me, the village has already decided in 2014, when we put together the comprehensive plan, what that would be zoned as, and if there's concern, then I think we should be hearing about that now at the plan commission and as we're working on the comprehensive plan, if, because that's already, it's theirs. I don't know that waiting until we're ready to rezone it would, what that would do if we could already now, if there's concern about how it would be rezoned, why not work through the comprehensive plan process on that where it's all laid out?
What keeps the, you know, the comprehensive plan as fluid, that could be changed at any time? So, what protects his rights?
The, so just like you said, it can be changed anytime, so showing up at the plan commission, testifying there, has to go through plan, and have, would have to come through the village board to get approved.
So, that, that happened with Shady Grove and it doesn't follow the comprehensive plan?
I don't know why we keep talking about Shady Grove.
Because that's an example, a recent example of, of a development that does not follow our comprehensive plan. You keep telling me that the comprehensive plan is the, I don't want to say, that we don't need to change it, we need to change it because that's what we're following, but we didn't follow it.
So, you're the only one who's saying we didn't follow it. I think what I'm hearing from the other professionals is that we did, that it is in line with our comprehensive plan. I can't speak to it, was not here during those decisions, but I, what I'm speaking to is going forward, I would like to have our citizens have their voice during the comprehensive planning process, recommend changes, come to the public hearings, come to the planning commission, make their voices heard now, before we even get a developer in, because the developer crowd, even looking at buying it, getting a plan going, gets all the way through this process, and then it boils up. But if we already know that there are some residents concerned about the plan for how it's going to be zoned, we should care about that now. We should, we should bring that forward through the channels of the comprehensive plan, plan commission.
Should have changed the comprehensive plan before we approved that.
I'll call for a vote.
Hmm?
I'm calling for a vote.
Is there any further discussion? I'm ready to vote.
Do you want to give a call?
I think that would be appropriate, yes.
Can you just repeat the motion one more time?
To remove ordinance 325-110G regarding the protest from our ordinances.
So, that's giving, please, we have no registered citizens on this, and no other municipalities except for Middleton or Ogden County have changed this, other than adding another hurdle for, another opportunity for citizens to...
And Middleton took away the super majority and went to a simple majority?
Right.
Oh, we do have a neighborhood meeting.
And we would still need a simple majority to pass a zoning when it comes here, so I'm not necessarily recommending an additional hearing, the way Middleton did it. In fact, we would remain that additional step, and so then it would be following in line...
And no one's, no one's really losing their rights. I mean, you can come to any of these meetings and speak, talk, and give us your opinion, and, oh, and this whole language of losing your rights is incorrect.
And since we're still discussing, I would bring out about the cases. People came and spoke against that and then it approved, so...
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right, roll call, please.
Murphy?
Aye.
Limberg?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
No.
Allen?
No.
All right, motion carries.
43.
All right, item 17D is discuss and consider revised public comment form. So, we should put that in the packet. There's a comment section in there now, signature block for, for that. That's pretty much what the board had asked for.
Yeah, I like the comment section.
Yeah, I've seen enough now that people write all, so it's good to have that here.
I'll make a motion to approve the comment form that's provided.
Good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item 17C, discuss and consider a second amendment of, excuse me, second amendment to agreement involving recreational facilities with Madison United Rugby, and this is, I think, the week in May.
Well, it actually is coming from the hard negotiation done by Matt and the staff to get to a point, and actually tonight, there are two examples of where we've successfully negotiated or brought to an end some difficult issues. The village, as you know, has contacted the rugby club, and the rugby club has offered a payment of $50,000 to the village in exchange for not having to complete the bathroom facilities and allow for limited park storage in Section 4 of the agreement. Now, the, there, there might be some minor revisions to this in terms of confirming what entity we're dealing with. The rugby club has gone through different structures, and so we want to make sure that we've got the right structure, but other than that, they agreed to the language, and so we submitted to the board.
It's minor saying they have the cash on hand.
I, I did include the, the original agreement and the amended agreement, and if at some point you want even more nighttime reading in addition to the audit material, I'd be happy to give you the exhibits, and that's another 50 pages.
So, a, at this point, there's nothing in there concerning a timeframe of when this needs to be built, is that correct? Right now, this has gone on for 10 years, this is going to happen, and it hasn't happened, and we're agreeing to do this, and they haven't agreed that in the next two years or five years, this facility will be built?
They have not agreed that the remaining item will become within a certain period of time. They have agreed that the $50,000 will be paid within 60 days.
So, the plan, obviously, for us is to build a space, restore agenda, and the bathrooms near the parks.
And when, when we would push back on that and try to get more from them, they would say, well, or we could just give you nothing and just build the, build the building, and I'm like, well, you haven't, and we get nowhere. So, the agreement just doesn't have teeth in it.
No, I get it, to say this is better than nothing, but...
Right.
They have failed their contractual agreement up to this point, and that's the important part.
I, I would simply say to the board, please remember this, the next time we have someone come in and say, it's not a problem to raise the money, because we hear it all the time. And Troy, you know, at the time, the mere suggestion of putting in a date was like, who do you think you are? And it's like, you know, we'll have this money next week, we don't need it any week from here, and, you know...
I get it, I get it.
So, if they don't pay within 60 days, this is void, and we go back to the original?
Mm-hmm. Great.
So, we do have an effective date?
When is the effective date? When the last person signed it or...
Effective date is going to be when, when they, when they sign it, when both sides sign it, we try to get it signed contemporaneously if we can. So, they sign, you know, they can sign a copy and data, we sign a copy and we can get it, and then we decide then what the date is going to be. But supposedly, they have the money right now.
Because it, I think it's that normal contract knowledge of when it's signed is the effective date, because there is no...
Well, this is the normal form that, format that we use, and what I, like I said, what I've always done is try to make sure that, that they get executed on the same date. So, for example, tonight, John and Lisa would, would sign this, and then we would, then we would wait for the rugby club to sign, and then we, we can put in the date, but we always make sure that there's a, that the dates match up, or I can change my format too.
Further questions for the... More than a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion to approve the second amendment to the agreement involving recreational facilities with Madison United Rugby.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And can we just say that I'm subject to edits as necessary by the attorneys?
Yes. Let me figure that maybe.
Yes. Three second.
All right, any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
If they oppose, maybe abstained, motion carries. Item 17D, discuss and consider development agreement for first edition to Cory Ridge State's plans.
This, this has been very hard, um, hard negotiations, and I'd just take a brief moment to explain that when I was first hired by the village, the first task that I was given was to come up with a developer agreement, because the Crawford Platte had just been built and, and the developer had gone bankrupt, and the platte was done, and that led to litigation and a lot of extra work and finances. So, we created a developer agreement, and at the time, the board, it was, one of the developers came in and said, I think this is a stupid agreement, and the board president at that time said, I don't care what you think, the lawyer and the engineer, who was also an MSA at the time, think it's what we need. It's based on Manona, Stoughton, Middleton, you know, some priority, everybody's got a very similar agreement, and so, we said, that's the agreement, and we're not going to deviate from it. And, believe me, we've had some real battles over time, where people said, well, we're not going to agree to this, we're not going to agree to this, and we just said, this is our format, if you want to develop here, this is what you've got to do. And this was another case of where, well, we're going to change this, we're not going to change, we're not going to go with that. And finally, a, another attorney got involved from their firm and knew what, what we had required and verified that it was consistent. So, the good news is that the developer came around, and we have reached an agreement on the developer agreement. This is the first developer agreement that we've done where we were accepting a performance bond instead of a letter of credit. A performance bond, it was just changed under the statutes. In fact, it was around the same time that the statute we just eliminated, or the ordinance we just eliminated, was passed by the legislature, and performance bonds are generally used for single event types of things. Mike, just correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the first time that we're aware, and we, and I know Matt had contacted the local administrators, and no one else has done one, so I guess we're in the vanguard as far as that's concerned. Spent a lot of time on it, and we're in a situation now where we believe that the village is protected. What the, what the bond or surety does is, the village in the developer agreement requires the developer to put in certain public improvements, and this, this just, or this, this bond is there in the event that for some reason the developer didn't finish the job. The difference is that with a letter of credit, we just, we go to the bank and we say, Mr. banker, they, they haven't done this or that, and we get a portion of the letter of credit. The performance bond is a little different, but it is now legal to use a performance bond, so we didn't really have much choice. I have no other issues... I have no other issues with, with the developer agreement. It has been negotiated literally line by line and has been reviewed by Matt, Aaron, and Mike in terms of their, their various areas. So I'm recommending approval.
Any other questions for Liam? Is there a motion to the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the developer agreement to the first edition of Cory Bridge Estates Plats.
I'll second that.
Second.
We need that one with the previous.
Sure. I think that if with the, it's good to spell it out, but just so the board understands all, there's always the possibility that a name gets changed or whatever. And so when you do give the approvals, if it's, if it's just a simple item like that, we'd probably go ahead with it. But if it's anything major, we can come back and forth.
So with the attorney edits as?
Yes, with the attorney edits. That'll be a new term.
Okay, great.
All right. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, that discuss the process for establishing board priorities for village operations. Matt, do you have a summary of this? And I think this is just the first?
Yeah. Essentially, it was a summary of showing everyone what was submitted last year, the ultimate results, but also what was, what the items at each, that the board members submitted last time around. So if there's some of those that you would like to resubmit, you know, you're welcome to do so. And I just kind of outlined the process over the next month or so to get us, get us through this again and get a prioritized list for, for this board.
And this helps feed into certainly financial planning, budgeting, all the other things that we're about to get into July, August, September timeframe. So I think that's helpful. And then it rolls into goals and objectives for department heads as well. So it's, it's good information for the board to be the same page and prioritize.
So kind of the action item for everyone, if you could send me somewhere between four and six. If you, if you happen to have seven things, that's fine. I mean, we just kind of try to keep it around that amount by June 12th. And if it's, if it's an item that is real specific, that you, you know, everyone would know what you're talking about, you don't necessarily have to send a description with it, but for instance, encouraging commercial development or something like that, everyone may have a different definition of what that means to you as an individual. So that's where, when you see in the descriptions in those first couple of pages of the, of last year's process, that, that's verbatim which, what each board member said for that particular item. And sometimes we'll get multiple submittals for the same item, but we just include it all so everyone can see what, what everyone's thoughts are on that.
Next man. Now we have a one more. All right. Item HB, or yeah, HB, sorry. Discuss and consider the award contract of Badgerland Excavating for Main Street Park Grant Path Construction Phase One. Mike, this is, you can talk to us about this. Mike has something in the packet as well.
Sure, we have a recommendation letter for a word, recommending a word. And then I have a sheet just after that that is bid, bid tabulation, Badgerland, R.T. Houston, and Madraw Excavating. So the bottom line total is also on that spreadsheet. But our estimate, my estimate was just under three hundred and eighty thousand. So this came in three sixty-seven. As I look through the line items and you can't compare one item to another depending on where contractors kind of hedge their profits and different things and plots. But as you look at it, you know, it just depicts that the other contractors, I think, had a heavy schedule to get this done. It's here. And would have had to create some kind of special workforce conditions to do it. So Badgerland, experience with them is we built a herb road in Commerce Park that's going alongside of a new rec facility. That turned out fine. On that, did I find no balances or problems with it?
Can you tell me the motion to approve the award of contract of Badgerland for the Park Grant Path Construction Phase One?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second. Any discussions, questions?
One last question. So the kind of hundred thousand dollar difference, you think it's just mainly attributed to the timeframe that they're working?
Yeah, it's essentially a summer bid and looking for contractors that are still out there with open schedules. And I think we found one, so.
When do you think that'll be completed?
September first.
That's pretty quick.
Kids' school.
Always to get the bits on it.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Item C is discussing considering liquor license application for license here July twenty nineteen through June twenty twenty for listed individuals. Any issues?
Nope.
Pretty good. Any questions concerned from the board? Their motion, Mike? Take it once.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Very one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. All right. Item eight D is discussing considering use of device permits and applications for license in July twenty nineteen through June twenty twenty. Again, another list in the packet for those device permits. Any issues we've heard from these facilities?
Can I ask what are these amusement devices?
Everything from the cranes, stuff, the animals, the chariots, shit and stuff.
Centipede over it.
It's always interesting to hear the board make reports on this. BB Jacks will have some, they'll be having some arcade games and games of chance.
Yeah. Quite a large room.
Nice. What does the farm currently have for amusement devices? Anyone have any idea? What did they get, what did they have across the, just the license application?
Oh, the farm? I think, last time I was in there, don't they have golden tea and things like that in there? Maybe I'm wrong.
I'll have to go check it out.
Thought they did.
I'll make a motion to approve the amusement device permit for the attached list.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Item P E, discussing considering cigarette license application for license in year twenty, July twenty nineteen through June twenty twenty for the attached list. Matt, we have clarification on that, right?
Yes. John had asked me about are e-cigarettes covered under this? And they are not. Lisa did some research. However, the legislatures, this is a current topic that they're working on. So there could be some changes coming.
And this is a significant problem in our high schools, so that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, the only thing that is required now is that they have to be years of age to purchase, but it's not regulated through the alcohol and tobacco agency for other tobacco products are, because it's not really considered tobacco. It's really nicotine and a liquid, so it doesn't fit in with what the current state statutes say, so they really need to be updated.
Now, the FDA is working on cracking down on some of those later uncertain links as well.
So is the, anyone know if the legislature is talking about that now?
There, it's, there's rumblings and I think it will be coming fairly quickly.
I have a, I have a conference in a couple of weeks. We usually get a legislative update from the league, so I may know more then.
Yeah. The only thing I have to look at is just to find out if it's going to be a long duration or leaning to take action or something that's going to end up.
I talked to our agent through Department of Justice today and he feels the same that it will be coming and they are already, you know, working on, some legislators are working in language.
And so do they think that places that we approve for tobacco and cigarette licenses will be granted again and then be able to sell the e-cigarettes or is it, we talked about?
I think, personally, I think it'll probably be completely different language because it doesn't really fall into tobacco because that's really not what it is.
I think that, that at least in the brief conversation I had with our legislature, it said, well, they're going to treat it separately.
I think they have to because of the nature of it.
The other question I had about the list, does CBS sell cigarettes or did they even stop?
I just did a search through, there's a administrator database through the Wisconsin City Management Association that, like, I could post a question to it, see how others are responding or how they're doing anything in this regard. And I just searched cigarettes and there hasn't been anything since 2014 on here with that. So it doesn't appear that there's any activity that anyone's working. Of course, someone could be and not posting here, but I'm not seeing anything here.
All right. Sorry for that little tangent, but is there a motion then to cigarette license applications for this next year?
I'll make a motion to approve cigarette license applications for license this year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Item F, discuss the resolution twenty nineteen dash zero three, resolution authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Dane County, with Dane County Housing and Community Development Grants. And this one is here.
This is in reference to the Dane County Community Development Lock Grant Consortium. We talked about this in the last meeting. That meeting directed me to notify Dane County staff of our intent to join the consortium and they have since responded with some language for a resolution and a cooperation agreement that's in the packet. By approving the resolution, we're authorizing us to join, to sign the cooperation agreements by approving the resolution basically.
I would ask that, assuming that you do approve that, here we would be given the authority, not just for the attorney edits, but over the course of time, Dane County has kind of a standard contract and we give a standard response to that contract and they have ultimately agreed to take out different things that we've objected to. The park grant is, is one of those. And so we would just make the same request of Dane County this time and I don't anticipate any, any issues.
Just don't, you know, I was going to ask for applications from a legal perspective.
Well, let's see, there were several federal regulations that they were asking us to sign. There was, I can't even remember all of them, but I mean, they were things that, you know, I would have made it cost prohibitive for us to really have done some of those things. And then when you actually ask about them, then the answer you often get is, I'm not really sure why that's there. And I said, well, if you don't know and I don't like it, is there any possibility we could have it? And they, and the corporation comes to agree with that, but I can, I can, I actually have the markup of the first one, so I can let you see that.
But that's a general contract, not specific to community development block grant, just general language?
Yeah, there's just, there's general language in certain parts of this that, that covers. I mean, the block grant itself, I don't know many issues with it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty nineteen dash zero three with the Dane County Housing and Block Grant with, with Lee's recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion second to the block grant is, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Item G is discussing considering appointment of periods for joint committees. This was put in by Louis and Sarah. Second.
Yeah, I just noted that this time we haven't appointed any alternates to committees for the joint committees. And since emergency government is coming up, I thought we should appoint people as alternates.
I think the question that I had was, if we're not appointed as an alternate, even though there's somebody else there from the board, are they allowed to substitute in as a voter? Do you?
Well, this has a rich and lengthy history. If at some point I could, I could annotate the ordinances I would and say, this was President so-and-so's issue and this was this issue. But this was Diane's issue and there was a lot of discussion about it. And I, I think that, I've tried to, I briefly checked some other municipalities. I didn't see anything in there. But in terms of, the issue that's here is, do you want an alternate to go to a meeting and then be expected to vote on something if they haven't really been a part of the discussion? Is it better for that or is it better to just say, well, I'm sorry, we don't have enough people available? The biggest issue that, the place that this is an issue is with our joint town, village committees because then it's like if, if three town people show up and only two village people show up and there's some type of dispute, you know, you get outvoted. And so there's, I mean, we talked about it as staff. We can't, we didn't really come up with any perfect solution other than what the language is right now.
What is the language?
The language is that the village president shall, shall subject to confirmation by the village board, have the authority to appoint any village board member to serve as an alternate member or members of any standing, special, or ad hoc board committee or commission when the regular appointee is not able to attend. Now, when that was first drafted, that seemed to take care of the problem, except when John or Troy is on this committee and he finds out after the village board meeting that he's not going to be able to be at the upcoming meeting. And then he calls the village president and says, well, I can't be there. And now, now the village president doesn't have a meeting to get the board to approve it. That's, that, I think that happened like the week after we drafted this. But, you know, we're certainly open to what people would want to do.
So one option would be to have alternates for three joint committees so that in one of our accesses, if we're on that committee, we don't have to worry about getting a special appointment in the midst of?
That's a possibility. The other thing I would just say is it does, I think, everyone takes their responsibility seriously. And the thing is that if you are not a regular member of the committee, you're going to going to have to be following what's going on. You may not go to the meeting, but, you know, getting the minutes, getting the practice and so on.
I like the idea of having an alternate just because that assigns somebody to continue to follow it versus I'm asking Troy this time to go and next time it might be Jeff and he provides a consistency. That's my opinion.
So Lee, based on what you just read in the ordinance, do we need to change the ordinance? Because essentially we're not, we're not following the ordinance to the letter.
Correct. So we either should follow it or we should change it.
To accommodate or whatever the board decides.
Right.
What ordinance is that?
That is, um, twelve dash one each, small two.
Small one.
Small two.
Lowercase two.
Small two.
Appointing of alternates would follow the ordinance or not?
Well, um, right now we've kind of done it on a, you know, as needed basis. We haven't really, uh, and I think it's been a while since we may have appointed people specifically.
No, the last time, last term we did.
We did. Well, whatever, whatever we're doing, we're going to do, let's make sure that it matches what, whatever the ordinance is.
Oh, so John, you said you were going to go to a, uh, emergency government on Thursday?
Yes, of course. Put over that language technically. Well, depending, I guess let's finish the conversation with this and have the board decide what we're going to do and then after the rest, our board decides the ordinance itself. Apply that, I think is appropriate. So that we are truly following it.
You know, I- Is there a motion second? Any other discussion of this?
I, I think any of the three joint committees, uh, there's people that have been absent, whether it's one from the village, one from the town, one from, you know, wherever. Uh, I, I guess I, I'm not sure what purpose an alternate really serves. They're not going to regular meetings. They really don't know what's going on.
If they could and would, I know that's how I would operate if I was an alternate. I would be attending.
Or follow along.
Or follow along and, uh-
Because as an alternate, you aren't required to attend every meeting then unless-
Unless we made it.
Somebody that was appointed specifically was not-
We could make it a requirement that they do attend.
I guess I would, um, make a motion that we appoint alternative members from the village board onto the joint, just the joint committees, EMS, fire, emergency government.
In that bill. Don't forget about that.
Oh, in landfill, yes, sure.
In my experience working on these joint committees, I mean, like they, the next joint fire in landfill, if someone's going to miss, I mean, it's, the other committee members are pretty flexible with moving the date that works for everyone. I do like the continuity of the alternate. I mean, we asked everybody about that, about the continuity of the meeting and, and most of the major decisions, from what I gather based on my experience, actually has to come back to the village board anyway. So even if you do get outvoted on some of these joint committees, I mean, the village board has to, I don't say.
So what your, what your feelings on all this?
I mean, I certainly understand the perspective of having alternates. I don't, I personally don't feel that it's needed.
Wait, did anybody second the motion? No, seconded. Then we can discuss.
I, can you repeat the motion?
Oh, okay. Um, to assign or to appoint a village board member to the four joint committees that we have with the town, which would be EMS, fire, landfill, emergency government.
With the requirement of attending or no?
Uh, I'm adding that into my motion.
No, second. Now there's a motion and a second. Sorry, I jumped ahead. Five minutes ago, I had a motion and second. Lee, does that present any problem other than we have to, you know, again, seeing how this sorts up? We have to amend the ordinance accordingly for the joint?
Well, yeah, we have to amend the ordinance. The other thing is that as a courtesy to the town, we would let them know that we are, um, you know, this is our, going to be our procedure because I know that in the past there have been sometimes where, you know, it's like, well, why are you here and, and what's your authority? The other thing is, and I, I didn't think to do it before the meeting, but does anybody know what, does the town have anything in, that they do or?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I've been at joint meetings where a member from the town is not there.
Yeah.
That's on the committee.
Yeah. And the other thing is, like, yeah, the other thing that just to keep in mind is if for some reason there is an important vote that, um, we don't have enough people add, we can always ask to have a table as a courtesy until we have a vote.
I like the idea of having a single alternate versus having a different substitute all the time that, you know, having someone else all the time trying to explain to them what's going on at the committee level. And, you know, I, I don't think that would be, uh, good use of people's time at the committee too, having to explain it to new members. So I like the idea of we have an alternate, to have one single alternate so then.
Can, can I just clarify something? When you say a single alternate, then it would be a different single alternate for each committee? Or would it be one super alternate?
I think it could be any combination of, I don't know, like, we could give, what if?
Two, two.
Yeah. So this, this is some of the magic of coming up with these ordinance is trying to anticipate what questions are going to be.
So the current ordinance you're saying says that, um, the president appoints every meeting if someone says they can't make the next meeting?
Correct.
But they could appoint the same person to the same one?
Yeah, they could, sure. But again, I think that, and then you get to call their spouses, I guess, why the way you're, you're. Um, I, you can do this anyway, again, you can do this any way you want. I think it's just important that as a board, we know what the direction is so that, um, because this, this question will come up and it's, it's hard when at five o'clock someone calls us, you know, can I go and can I vote? And what if they tell me that I can't vote? Then what happens? And that, that has happened. So I think we ought to make our decision and then let the town know this is how we're going to do it.
Well, and, but over the past year, like, I filled in, um, as an alternate for EMS and for joint fires. So I think the town does understand that that is our, how we operate now. But I mean, it doesn't hurt to let them know when it's official, I guess. I didn't realize that that wasn't how we did it in the ordinance because we did just, um, do that last year to appoint alternates. So that's what I was operating under. But the reason why I brought up, John, that you were going to emergency government is because since you're, you're planning on attending them anyway, I think it makes more sense for you to be the alternate on emergency government because as president you don't have a voting capacity.
Okay. I'll email myself and figure out.
See if you can make it.
Well, I, I, for, again, I'm assuming the board approves this, I'd want to reach out to each of you to find out if you want to do, you know, serve on another committee as an alternate out of courtesy and then draw straws or whatever we need to do if we need to be. So that's how I was going to approach it. So we have a motion and second. Any further discussion on this? We have an ordinance that needs to be adjusted back in how this goes.
So Sarah, just to clarify your motion, was that, and they, what, Jeff said that they need to attend or you did not add that?
I did not add that.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Do you want the discussion? Then I guess we vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, anybody opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Limber?
Nay.
Allen?
Nay.
Murphy?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Russell?
Nay.
So it's three aye or no?
Okay, that motion does not carry.
So then I guess just one other question, then, so each time we're going to miss, we need to tell you and you have to appoint somebody?
Yes, appoint somebody and then-
And then bring it here and get board approval?
Well, it's-
For them to be able to-
As a, as a practical matter, I'd like to try to get away from that because that puts you and John in a real difficult situation because your, your, um, conflict comes up tomorrow, the board meeting isn't, you know? So I, I, I think we should decide, are we going to have one super alternate, uh, alternates for specific committees or what? Because the, the president spends enough time on his job as it is and having to kind of field those calls and make sure that there are people at the meetings is an extra burden.
And worry.
Mind that actually. I just want to make sure that we're covered when it comes to these meetings. And I think people have, for the most part, I think board members are highly dedicated to all the things they're assigned and go above and beyond and move things around in their personal lives to make these meetings. And there are a few occasions, generally work and some family committees that come up and there are those occasions where we can have to, you know, spot somebody in if it happens. Well, and on the, I mean, on the meetings that we have, like CDA next week, I mean, I'm going to be gone, but Sarah's going to fill, uh, fill in as the chair. Do we really need an alternate there?
That wasn't one of the joint ones.
Oh, that's right.
These were just the four joint ones.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I think the other thing to keep in mind is any of us can go to any of these meetings that we want to and voice our opinions, the villagers' opinion. We may not have a voting right, but again, having a voice could make a difference without having that alternate vote.
Well, you can do that anyway as a public, as a member of the public.
Well, I think, and, and Troy, just to follow up on that, if, if you do that, it's a good idea for you to say, I am here tonight, not in my official capacity, but as a citizen and this is, this is my opinion.
But we can stay during closed session, which the public can't though.
Yes.
Not during the joint, we learned that.
Right, we did just hear about that.
You can't stay here.
Only if it's a subset of-
I guess that's maybe, well, that's what, we don't know. But, like, that's why to, to me-
Was that Dan Barker?
I don't know. It was Dan.
It's Dan.
Yeah.
Well, okay, whether he's right or wrong, um, then we'll deal with our issue first and then talk about that.
So I was just, so what, what needs to be amended in the, in the ordinance? I guess I'm not-
Can I have it read one more time, please?
Says, um, "The village president shall, subject to confirmation by the village board, have the authority to appoint any village board member to serve as an alternate member of any standing, special or ad hoc board commission or committee when the regular appointee is not able to attend."
So you'd have to add the, the joint meeting, the joint committees in there?
No, we had to add the alternate.
So what, what's the issue?
Well, the issue is that, that who's going to attend those meetings if, if you need an alternate?
Whoever's appointed.
Well, I know, but that's the, what we're talking about is are, are you going to appoint one for each of the committees or are you going to have only one person? Or are you just going to let, or are you going to let the board call each other and say, can you attend the meeting?
The way the ordinance sounds to me is that one person can be appointed for a committee for the whole year.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, so just like we were doing it last year.
Yeah.
Which is what the motion was, right?
So to make sure I understood, the motion that I made was to appoint some-
But it was specific to the joint.
To the joint, oh, okay.
It was the only difference.
So what happens if we have an alternate, but they don't base their schedule on that meeting because they don't typically go and all of a sudden that last minute comes up and, oh my gosh, I'm sick, I can't make it to EMS and whoever that alternate is, is gone and we're, we're no further ahead. I think it's just kind of a silly debate that they don't really serve a purpose in my mind.
That's absolutely an issue that-
You know-
-gets thought about, which is, okay, it turns out that there's a plague going around and everyone's got it except for one person on the board that isn't.
And I base my schedule on when these committee meetings are, village board meetings, all that stuff, so I can attend. And to be an alternate and, well, I haven't gone, haven't had to go the last nine of them, well, that 10th meeting and, you know, the day before I get a phone call and I'm scheduled to be doing something else, you know? So possibly I couldn't be there. I understand that as an excuse or as an example, I should say.
That's why I was hoping your motion was-
If you would like to amend the motion, Jeff, or make a new one?
I'll make a motion then, although I, I don't know if I like the idea of changing the ordinance because it costs money, right, to change the ordinance?
I just asked how you would enforce that, Jeff?
Enforce what?
Requiring someone to attend.
You would.
I, I'm no longer, I'm no longer that, sure.
Can I ask a question? I mean, in your interpretation, once again, I don't have it in front of me, but as a future agenda item, can we give the village president confirmation to appoint alternates like likely? I mean, you know, as an option, I'm just trying to go off the memory what I just heard here.
Instead of having to get through, go through the board?
Yes.
Well, yeah, yes, you can, John. And, um, that, that you can certainly do it everywhere else in the ordinance is, just so you know, it's, um, the village president's parrot or the village president gets named somebody and it's subject to board approval. And at different times in our history, that has been jealously guarded and at different times the board goes, yeah, I'm a virgin. So it's, it's really up to, up to you and the board as to whether you want to give John that blanket power, um, or not.
And just my mindset is, with Troy's example, if they have an alternate and we're asking for continuity to attend all these meetings and that 10th meeting, for example, uh, they, you know, they haven't been needed, so they have a conflict. But like me, for example, you give me a call and I can make tomorrow night's meeting and someone's spinning me out. And that way we, we don't have a meeting in between where you can appoint a trustee to attend.
Right.
That would be easier to, rather than trying to circulate an email or whatever and say, okay, don't reply, all, everybody, just, you know?
So hypothetically, if I'm not on any joint meetings committees, but if I was on a joint committee and I couldn't attend all of a sudden, three days before I found out, you know, something tragic happened, so I would let John know and he would then take responsibility to find an alternate.
Right.
In the sense they try to, you know, say something cool, like a trip to Vegas or something like that.
I want a cruise.
Or a cruise, yeah.
Call it a little cruise, it's probably, it's probably.
Well, I think, as you were saying, John, that, um, we all take our committee appointments seriously and, um, work to attend them as much as, or as we can. Um, and so when something does come up, it's rare that somebody does need to miss. I mean, I filled in twice as an alternate. And the reason why I was an alternate because it did work in my schedule. So, um, and who I filled in for knew in advance that they would be gone, so let me know. So it was never like last minute, like, oh, can you do this? Like, so I think that hypothet, I mean, if that happens, it happens sometimes, emergencies happen and people can't attend and then we're just down, um, one member at that meeting. But I think it is, um, I think it's good to have an alternate assigned so that they know that they are an alternate and can keep up and attend if they want or not, but just be aware that it's there and if they need to check with the people that are assigned, then they can. But I like the idea of having an alternate assigned for the year.
It seems like an easy first pass, if I'm going to be absent, I'm going to tell my alternate I'm going to be absent. Then if they go to Disney World on a magical dream vacation, then they, then my alternate calls John and goes, we've got a double whammy vacation going on here. And now John finds an alternate and takes, so to me, it's an easy first pass that we most likely will be able to cover with an alternate. Most of the time, we're going to be able to go to the meetings. I, I guess I, it'll, it's following the ordinance as written. Um, I don't see the negative to it. That's, I guess, where I'm coming from. I only see the positives, but it's happy to hear what the negatives are.
Do we want to, not like a joint one, but like key ones like plan commission or, um, CDA or EMS?
Those I think, I don't know. I, to me, those aren't as critical, but I'd be happy to consider.
Well, um, several years ago when- Well, several years ago, when, when we added some of this language, we also did deal with, in the event that the position of village president is vacant, then the board can be, you know, appoint to an alternate member to any of these boards, committees, and commissions. So after Pat's death, we had some of this, some of this discussion. It's just, again, it's just a question of how you wanna go.
Gosh, I, I think I've been on the board for three years, and I've been on alternate committees for three years, never once been called, I mean, we're, we're spending a lot of time talking about something that isn't accounting circumstance.
Twice, and two times this month, I'm missing emergency government and Melissa has to miss fire.
And that's in July.
Okay, in July, so it's coming up, we have two that we know are going to be missing. Again, I don't see the downside, but what, what is, what's the problem if we?
I'm running a system with ordinances, what are we doing?
Which this would be, right, you can point to any.
This is a shell.
You shall, shall, subject to confirmation by the village board, and it says, to any standing, doesn't say to all.
Well, let's put it this way, if, if the board can come to an agreement tonight, I'll amend it for free. Okay, I mean, I, I just, you know, I, I understand the concern about spending money on ordinances, but the money gets spent, it, whenever you change, it's got nothing to do really with the lawyer, it's got to do with the publication, with the codification process. And honestly, I would hate to see the board not change an ordinance because, you know, what else might cost us some money, I mean, just, you know, so it's not gonna question legal time, let's just, you know, let, why don't you just make the decision, and if you don't like it, bring it back and try something else.
I don't see what we're changing about the ordinance, we're just trying to appoint an alternate to committees.
Yeah, the.
And whether we do it or not, it's a shell, it doesn't say must.
Right.
So whether we go with the alternate or we don't, I don't think the ordinance really needs to change.
It's just any, right, so we could segment out.
I didn't know that, I thought we had to change.
Yeah, I thought it was all, so, so it's any.
Yeah, I mean, the, the idea was always that if something happened, we wanted to make sure that there was an alternate, and it's not, I mean, in different years, sometimes you have a lot of people who, who miss Alex, got sent to France, and you use that as an excuse not to come to, I mean, you know, but it, it happens, so.
Yeah, let's go crazy and put everybody's name as an alternate. Then it's just dialing for dollars to see who can attend the meeting.
Well, it's kind of what we have now, really.
And again, the risky run is they don't know what's going on, and it just, yeah.
They're always doubled up, if, if we're looking at the joint meetings, I mean, there's at least two of us that, that are in those joint meetings, and like I said, when it comes to budget or major decisions, it's, so let's come back to the village board, so even if you get outvoted at the fire commissioner, whatever it may be, village board, so it's about saying what comes in dollars and public savings or things like that, so I, I don't see these committees changing the authority of the board, whether we have an alternate or assigned individuals.
But is there reason not to have an alternate?
It goes back to commitment, in my opinion, I mean, if I'm an alternate, yeah, I'd like to attend every meeting as opposed to someone else might have a different opinion, or maybe on the slide or not, I don't know, it's all a call. I just, I mean.
And I would say when John would reach out, you could say, I don't think I wanna take on that commitment of an alternate. To me, it's just an easy thing, we could solve right here, just, boom, just pick some alternates and.
Well, that goes back to what you were saying, Jeff, is whether or not they have to attend.
I mean, I think if you wanna, if you wanna have a voting, say, I think you should be very mu, be up on what's being talked about and try to get to as many as you possibly can.
And the only, the only thing I was, when I was asking Jeff that, what I meant by that is, if someone doesn't attend and they're required to attend, what is the penalty? I, I don't think there's anything you can do.
Didn't we already decide that?
That, that's all I was getting at with that.
I guess if you're going to appoint an alternate on a case-by-case basis, then that person's going to have to get up to speed on what's going on, where even if you didn't attend every meeting, you would still know it's on the agenda, you could attend some of the meetings, and kind of had a, more of a general idea of what's going on, rather than just case-by-case, now this person's gonna go, and then the next six months later, that person will go.
Flowing, meaning for all adults, we, we have to ask smart questions and hear what's going on and read up, but I kinda like the idea, if you're gonna be an alternate, you have to go.
We highly encourage attendance versus mandatory, so that we don't have to come up with a consequence. Shall make most reasonable effort to be an attending.
Coming up, the bill is usually the most fun.
That's your turn for this.
The man needs a, on the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Is there another motion?
Should we make a new motion to, with my new motion set?
Well, what you, what you should do is just either withdraw your motion or, or.
It's already.
Is it, it's already?
It's done, so she could make a new motion. I could make a new motion, but I don't think anybody else, unless two hundred else is motion thunder.
And then it's Sarah.
Okay, so let's see, well, just before I make it, I mean, confirm a couple things. Sounds like we, there's some feeling that highly suggested attendance if you are an alternate. Was there any other discussion on if it should be for any meetings specific to a committee or specific to the joint ones, or?
I think the consensus here that I have, it's just joint thing.
So then I would make a motion that tonight we appoint an alternate, and that person will make the most reasonable effort to attend the meeting that they are appointed as alternate to for joint fire, joint EMS, emergency government, and joint landfill.
Is there a second?
So you're saying just one alternate?
An alternate, could be four people, one for each, could be one for all four, could be two, two, three, one, whatever, an alternate for each, maybe.
I have a second.
Okay, motion second. I'll do a roll call again.
Sure.
I don't think there's any further discussion.
Okay, Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Yes.
Valencia?
Aye.
Allen?
Nay.
Limburg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Russell?
Nay.
So we have five, two, motion carries.
So in order to make this effective, we should change the ordinance first before we start assigning people, incorrect?
We don't have to change the ordinance.
Yeah, I am, I don't think we have to change it, in, in, if, if in implementing this, we think there is a change, we'll bring it back, but, you know, let's, at the next meeting, you could appoint the super delegate or.
Do you wanna appoint tonight for this coming week, or?
No, I, well, I think we've covered this coming week.
For you.
Yeah.
Can the village attorney be on landfill?
Can what?
Can the village attorney be on landfill as an alternate?
I don't negotiate that, so yeah, you know.
So then, please let me know if you wanna be an alternate, and then what we'll do is we'll get it on as an agenda item in two weeks from now for the approval for those individuals.
But do we, does the board need to approve who's going to serve as the alternate for this week? Or that didn't come through the board yet, has it?
For.
Emergency government?
Emergency government, so the single meeting we're talking about coming up, we're transitioning from Troy's current, or just off of that, and Sarah's going on, I don't know.
Well, Sarah's already appointed to the emergency government.
Yeah, we don't, we have to worry about just the one meeting.
Well, then there's only three people that voted emergency government, so I think it would, I think it would be a good idea to appoint someone as an alternate to a joint committee, and that's why I brought up John, since he's going to be attending, John goes, he's gonna be attending anyway.
And again, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder.
Or should we, we just make a motion that for the June emergency government meeting, Troy ayes, is the appointed alternate?
And that kind of comes out of the discussion item.
So the motion second to cover EOC, Troy Allen, you know, he's the one. In.
For the June meeting?
For the June.
Just for the June meeting.
Just for the June, and then we'll have motions for all four committees at the next meeting for alternates. He's done, I'll hear from everybody.
Yeah, I would also note then for, for whoever is appointed, that you can, like, I believe that Sarah should be appointed as chair then in emergency government, because Mike Fonger has been, was chair last year, and Sarah has a background with experience for emergency operations, so even though she won't be there, you can appoint the person that is.
I, I think that we gotta be careful about getting into the operations of the board's committees and commissions because we would, as a board, be unhappy if they got into our operations. So I think that, Sarah, that's your, that's something for you to, or you're definitely to just go, you know, I would be, I'm interested in being the chair, there are some questions as to why that hasn't happened, so you could certainly make your request known.
So we have a motion and second for this week's EOC, for Troy to cover for Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can they be opposed?
Aye. I can't be there this week, so.
You can't be there this week?
No, I, other point, I have another.
Oh, 'cause that's what John just said in an email that you were covering for me.
I can't be there.
All right, then, scratch that, no, then I will be there, I, I thought you were.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
So that was the motion, Eric. All right, how do we handle that one? Is Doran or Karen carrying?
Well, I just say, ask who can go and appoint them tonight, and just, and then we'll deal, you know, we've, we've set out a new path or an old path or whatever, and, and just do it that way.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that I attend the EOC meeting this week.
Okay, that's one.
Thank you, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can they be opposed, can they abstain, motion carries? All right, moving on. Item H is confirm quorum to discuss potential agenda items for the June twenty-seventh joint town village meeting. We, we met last, it's been a while ago, I don't know if you knew. We have tried to start maintaining a joint forum for both the town and village boards to get together to discuss items that are common goals or common, commonality. The last time we met, it's set for June twenty-seventh as the date, I believe it is at the town hall, and I believe it was set for six thirty, or that. What this is, just to confirm that we do, we'll have a quorum for the twenty-seventh again, means that this is new for some of us. And then potential agenda items that people wanna cover during that, just, this is just a discussion, so.
What number do we need to make the quorum?
Four.
Four of us?
Four of us.
And four of the town then?
Uh, three. And I had asked Chris if they still had it on their calendars, and she said yes, so.
I'll be in Denver, so, yeah.
Okay, so that's one.
I have a work event in Milwaukee.
And that's two.
I have another event.
Okay, that's three, all right, there are four of us left.
I'm, I'm off.
So you're a town, are you a town?
I should, I should be back by then.
And I'm available, so we got a, we do have a quorum, being that. And everybody's comfortable with that, and we're not, we're not discussing here, moving on any items really, it's just more of a conversation primarily, anything we had to come up with for, you know. There are some interesting items to potentially discuss, we have talked about Flint Hall, for instance, and Chris is open to discussing that as far as renegotiating, renegotiating the agreement. So that potentially, I don't know, we could talk about as a joint committee. We certainly can talk about perhaps the border agreement discussions that are going on between the town and Madison, and Madison and us, although I still don't know what's going on with the mayor, so we haven't heard anything back. It's a freedom of silence. And probably won't hear anything that comes up initially, she's already got a lot of other things to, to get way through first. That's a potential item there. Economic development is a general topic, we can always talk about that, I, again, I don't know what I have there. Other items that we guys can pick up? Just have a call about Riddler.
Could we discuss the permit that's required to make a run in morning dove streets?
Okay.
Can you, will somebody be able to give me some history on what that is about, Melissa, or can be outlined, just so that I know what?
The two streets are lined up and there's no asphalt between them for a hundred feet or so, I don't know what it is.
No, it's, it's like fifteen feet.
Fifty. I'll read that, okay. And Mike would know probably more detail, but.
I think Amber brought, he brought it to his property line, so it's, town can do whatever they want.
So it's up to the town?
Yeah.
And it's, does it run in one?
Morning dove.
Morning dove.
And then, I'm wondering about the town's business park off North Star, North Star, what businesses, I don't know, or what's going on with their development there. Even though it doesn't necessarily involve us, it's still nice to know what businesses are coming into the town they have going on.
Certainly something that we're coming up pretty soon for all of us, with the census. Information coming up in the next few weeks, and what agenda items subsequent to that coming for all of us, but it's something we talk about, joint training, or, you know, possible, say the government will money, whatever group we get together versus their group to make all that happen, perhaps that, it may not work out, but something certainly I think we're talking about. You got any comment?
They have jobs available or training, testing stations, anything with the census to employ people, they test?
Yeah, they, all that's coming, they have, it's just the initial, we had, Matt and I had an initial overview of three, three weeks ago, but I don't think they've been attached since that happened.
She's sent us a bunch of attachments that we have to review, and I'll be summarizing those, I'll get an email to the board, and then we'll have some agenda items at future meetings.
Yeah, but, I mean, share, you have businesses and stuff that'll get the order out of the town and village residents.
Yeah, and certainly there will be job opportunities associated, that should be a challenge, I think, in this market. Any other items? It's a fair list, I read it, because I'm certain that the town has some ideas as well that are different from this.
Is your goal, John, to maybe have the topics that the town has and the village for the next village board meeting, like, lead into?
Yeah, that's the goal, so what I was gonna do is reach out to Chris after this and try to get, so, I think, let him know that we, we have a quorum available, make sure that they still do, and that we wanna move forward with that.
Is it here or there?
It's there.
There. I think last time it's here, so tag there, right? All right, thank you for that. All right, then, item nine, that reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, here for court.
We, we met on May twenty-first, and we started the meeting, John, Russell had come and discussed, asking that. that possible Briar Patch and Pure Court could possibly provide some volunteers for Market Days. And so we discussed that real quick and then I do believe John is gonna connect with Sierra from Briar Patch to discuss that, correct?
Yeah, I got, I don't know if I can, no.
Okay.
Doesn't look favorable, but.
Okay, all right. And then Briar Patch did their report and they started off, we talked about counseling because one of the questions was, you know, do they, do the youth get counseling in addition to, you know, being referred off to Pure Court? And each, each kid does get one hour of counseling, one to two, one to three times depending on the severity of what was going on. I had asked specifically, what if they find during that time of therapy, the possibility of mental illness? Since that's a, you know, that'd be a pretty big deal to be able to catch that and help a kid through that because it's a scary thing for a kid to have to go through in a family. And they do have agencies they refer off if they do feel like there's mental illness involved and that's why they, they were an offender. And then Sierra talked about how her and Tammy and Hannah are gonna get to go to this National Restorative Justice Conference in Colorado, so they're pretty excited about that. They were also talking, Sierra also mentioned that there's gonna be a juror, a pure court juror training coming up. And I believe I have some information about that. Become a volunteer juror, Briar Patch Youth Services, Wednesday, June nineteenth. So if there are any, anybody in our community, any youth that are part of the school that wanna become a juror, it's on Wednesday, June nineteenth, from noon to four, I have the flyer right here. And that is gonna be at Briar Patch Youth Services, twenty-seven twenty Rimrock Road. Then on June eighth, there is going to be a talent showcase. So for kids that have gone through Pure Court to be able to show their talents and their skills, there's gonna, it's called Being Ourselves, it's okay, there's a dance, there's gonna be staff there and it's just a chance for, for them to show their, their, their skills. Another thing, reaching out to the youth here in Cottage Grove, in Minona Grove, would be to, if you are good at art and you wanna create a logo, they're looking for, and I'll read this to you, the Wisconsin Teen Court Association is rebranding in hopes of coming up with a new logo that represents the evolution of the youth peer courts and teen courts throughout Wisconsin. We are looking for individuals who may have first-hand knowledge of what peer teen court is like, are passionate about restorative justice and/or love to be creative. Please send your creative logo ideas to the, to the contact information, June seventh, by June seventh, so it can be talked about and voted on, I think, at that, or presented at that event on June eighth. So I've got some more information about this too, so. Oh, the Rising Generations event, the one on June eighth, is four P M. and it's at Briar Patch, okay? Eleven, I'm sorry, eleven to four P M. Yeah, Saturday, June eighth, eleventh A M. to four P M. Briar Patch, twenty-seven twenty Rimrock Road. The April Pure Court, the Pure Courts up to this point have been really good. You're gonna see, I don't know, did you guys get the report in the, oh boy, wasn't attached. We did not meet our, so there were thirty-three cases referred, only twenty-seventeen. Usually it's, you know, thirty-three, thirty-three. She want, Sierra wanted to point out the fact that it's because some, some kids opted out, that you, you have the option. If you get referred to Pure Court, you can say, I'm not interested and take whatever the fine is or whatever's involved in that. So there was nothing to, to be worried about there, so. And let's see. The next meeting is set for July sixteenth at five-fifteen P M. So, and I will pass this. For you guys to look at. Am I supposed to do something to get that attached to, our meetings here for everybody?
With the agenda?
Yeah.
I certainly can do that.
Okay, yeah, that way it's just a monthly reports for that, thanks.
All right, then we'll move on to Parks.
We had a pretty busy schedule on Wednesday, May twenty-second at six-thirty. We talked about the Shady Grove Park, so if you've seen an updated map of that. There's a small park adjacent to an outlaw for water retention. So the committee agreed to that park dedication. In addition, they also will be collecting a fee in lieu of extra parkland, an amount of approximately a hundred twenty-eight thousand. So the park plus the fee. We did like that it was adjacent to the outlaw, so there we, you can look out and see nature there. And then we also saw the parkland dedication for the fifth addition to West Lawn, which is going to be Fifteen Acre Park, right in the first part of that addition, so people were pretty excited about that much space. Next, the next few things are kind of all put together in a memo prepared here about the Miracle Field and also talks about the stewardship grant that was used, purchased back in park and then we sold the seven-point-five-eight acres of land to Wisconsin Rugby. And then we needed to have that appraised, so we also had the one-point-zero-one acres of land appraised that could be used for the Miracle League. So the, both of those parcels came to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand seven hundred, this is all laid out in the memo. So we can convert both of those parcels out of the stewardship grant program, as some of you may have heard about before. And then the bike path that we just approved earlier, the contract, will be used to fulfill that two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand seven hundred. So we have the, satisfied that for both of the parcels. So that leads us to be able to create a lease to lease the one-point-zero-one acres to the Miracle League of Dean County. And we would become the home for such a great program that offers the opportunity for our kids of all abilities to take part in baseball. So, can we, should I present the rest of the agenda or do we take action on that item as it comes up?
Probably best to act on the, on the item.
Yeah.
And I did talk to Sean today, Heidi, and he was, he was asking for the board to consider, on the bottom of his memo there, a similar motion as to what the committee approved, is what the recommendation is.
Do we know when they would wanna build that? Have they got raised funds for that and everything?
Right, and they have raised some funds, so they're looking to raise five-hundred-and-sixty thousand, which will be to construct the field plus two years of operating expenses, which is providing T-shirts to the, to the participants.
And Sean's not here, but would, would we have to do anything from our part to, to get the, allow those kids to get to this area? In other words, we have to have additional handicap parking stalls in that parking lot? Do we have to do a different footpath to make sure that we kinda accommodate them? Those are just questions.
Sure, those are good questions. That, I, I don't know, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna just guess on that. This approval tonight, we still have to, we still have to come back with a lease before it's final, so there would be continued discussion on that. So we can get those questions to Sean, that didn't come up at all at the?
No, we talked about the shelter and the plans for the shelter and the bathroom with the handicapped accessible. And then there's also a plan to have an adult kind of changing size table in the handicap restroom areas.
I would, I would say if, if that was needed, maybe the lease would be contingent on them raising the funds to pay for some of that, if that. I think there's things we can include in the lease.
I just wouldn't wanna have them say, great, we're gonna put it here and then all of a sudden we forget a few items.
To make accommodations.
Yeah, we definitely wouldn't wanna do that, you know, put into this, you know, make sure that we're accommodating all their needs.
Heidi, when, when is the next Parks meeting?
The next Parks meeting is June twentieth, Thursday.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to have a draft of the lease to Matt and Sean for a presentation to your group.
All right, so I'll make a motion to pursue a lease agreement with Miracle League to occupy forty-three thousand nine-hundred-sixty-eight square feet of land at Bakken Park, pending the approval of a mutual lease agreement.
First, a second. And that lease agreement certainly include anything like Madison or if you have something extraordinary you had to do? I don't, I don't see there.
Sure.
Whatever shelter we build is gonna be compliant with the grant.
Well, I think we try to set out what the village's responsibilities are. And is, is there financial responsibility, is there anything that we have to do? And so that the board has a clear picture of what's gonna be required.
The other question I have is, is there additional liabilities? I mean, if they're within their facility, how does that work? I don't, I don't know. Again, simulated buildings, as they presented, something very appropriate for, for these folks, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I am concerned about parking and if we have a splash park there and we have this, where's everybody gonna go? You know, unless something has to be part of the plans, because that's gonna cost quite a bit of money to do a new parking lot. Let's say on the Fireman's Park side of that park, we have that property, right? That little sliver there that we could park cars in? I don't see where we can expand the parking lot that exists there. There's only sixty stalls, if I remember right. I mean, I'm just thinking further ahead than just this part of it.
Right.
And we haven't approved a splash park either, but, you know, what happens, everybody wants to go on the same night as a, a game.
Well, that's something that can be worked out with scheduling, then. I mean, Sean has been thinking about this too, it's not, I mean, he seems to have it all laid out. It's unfortunate that he's not here tonight, but he's very organized and very detailed in his, in his part. I mean, Bakken Park is what he is working on, like that's his part. So he believes that Miracle League Field will be a good thing to have in the park and for the village. So that's why I was looking for it. Does the motion need to be amended based on the concerns or is a mutual lease agreement cover? Any requirements for handicapped spaces?
You're assuming that the attorney will think when he writes this, so.
Well, we, we provide.
Kind of covers the whole.
Yeah.
When in Lee, I would like to see in the lease, and I, I mean, I hope nothing but the best for Miracle League, but in the event they build something and they go dis, you know, in like five years, who's responsible for the removal of? Well, to pick up on exactly what I said earlier about the rugby field, I mean, you know, it's always, well, this will go and what if it doesn't?
Yeah. So part of some time we have to, an exit strategy, unfortunately, we wouldn't want to see that happen.
Yeah, good situation.
All right, so we have a motion and second to consider allowing Miracle League to occupy most forty-one thousand square foot. One acres in Bakken Park. Any further discussion? Having heard them, all those in favor?
Aye.
May be opposed, may abstain, motion carries. All right, so, flow into, can I feed them?
Yeah, so we have the dates listed of the Music in the Grove events. So we're, the Parks Department is seeking sound, uh, sound amplification permit for those dates between six and eight P M. So we suspend ordinance one-oh-nine dash twenty-eight to allow for sound amplification and alcohol to be consumed in Double Park on those dates mentioned previously.
Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to waive the alcohol and partial requirement for Music in the Grove for the two thousand nineteen season.
Two thousand nineteen?
What was that?
Did you say for the two thousand nineteen season?
Two thousand nineteen.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and second, any further discussion? Having heard them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, may be opposed, may abstain, motion carries. I didn't hear anybody, I heard a lot of ayes.
I do have a question, not, I mean, the motion's done. Why do we have, we had to do this for ourselves to have Music in the Grove, but why didn't we have to do permits for the Fireman's Festival, that they're having alcohol and loud noise?
We should.
Should.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was on there as a discuss to consider and, but we've seen different boards handle it differently. Some, some have just said, thanks for the information, you're good to go, others have made a motion. I, I don't really, technically, it would be nice to have that, but I think everyone's informed. The police know, Public Works knows about the parade route and road closures. And I think going forward, Lisa's gonna have a checklist that she'll give to the, give to them so that they get a, you know, approval for park hours and sound amplification and things like that. But I think everyone's pretty well informed in what they're, what they're doing, but.
And the fireworks?
Well, yeah, fireworks. There, there is a binder that they get from their fireworks company.
Insurance?
Insurance binder, right?
Yep, we've already got it.
Okay, great.
So it doesn't, if we haven't suspended those ordinances, it doesn't legally create any problems for us?
No, I, I, I mean, I, I think that what, what the discussion has been on staff, and it sounds like with John and Matt, you know, we just need to decide, are we going to approve the festival? And maybe it's as simple as just saying, well, here's the checklist, we'll know it's there and we'll know that those items have been taken care of.
Just to finish up, the Parks Committee, the Hydrate had their annual day of giving, the second annual on May thirtieth. Sean accepted a donation on behalf of Parks Department, so I attended it, have a couple pictures of them. It was a very nice event, they donated to a number of organizations. The Fire Department Habitat for Humanities, African-Hamlet Food Bank, Mentoring Positives, Joint Emergency, among some others. They also sponsored the first Music in the Grove that same evening, along with Whobler's Heating and Air Conditioning. Hydrate provided pizzas and cookies, which was great, and there were about a hundred to a hundred and fifty people there enjoying the music at Music in the Grove. And then our next meeting is Thursday, June twentieth at six-thirty.
Next, we have law enforcement committee.
Oh, we have one.
I moved to a free, sound applica, application.
I thought I heard both.
He did both.
He did both, okay, I'm sorry, I will add that.
That's what I thought I heard, too.
I think you basically, it kind of read as the staff recommendation, I think.
The Parks Department is meeting on Thursday night instead of Monday. Yeah, so they had switched during the previous chair, there were some conflicts and one of the resident members had some conflicts with the original time in our ordinances that Parks met. So they met the fourth Wednesday of every month instead of the third Thursday. So now we're going back to what our ordinances said and meeting the third Thursday of each month.
At six-thirty still?
Six-thirty still.
All right, so moving on to law enforcement committee, we met on May twenty-eighth. So Sarah, we're there, law chief. Community members, we covered new business, there was a, and again, Chief, if you wanna jump in and get this, you're free.
Sure, let me know when to jump in.
Well, if you wanna talk about, actually, I'll let you talk about the search warrant and the very new business items because I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Well, we did a search warrant in Maria Lane in May and was for a residence that. Well, we did a search warrant in Maria Lane in May and was for a residence that had a lot of short-term traffic and complaints from neighbors. So we executed the search warrant, seized cocaine base commonly known as crack cocaine. Done with obliterated serial numbers, drug distribution paraphernalia, scales, things like that. I sent a state nuisance letter to the property management company, basically telling them that they have a nuisance there. And it met the requirements of the state statute. As opposed to our local ordinance nuisance, which would have required the, I think, the village president to, and maybe the board to sign off on it. But the nuisance letter is used by the property management company, basically tell these people, hey, you've had enough chances, you gotta go. And it shortens up the process, which it did, and they're out now. So they're out of, out of that house. I don't know where they moved to, but that's the update on that. The asset forfeiture update, that was thirteen thousand dollars we seized from a drug dealer in November of twenty eighteen. It's gone through the federal asset forfeiture process and the police department will be getting about ten thousand dollars. Whenever the federal government deems it necessary to give it to us, which could be months or years. But I was informing the law enforcement committee of that because there are certain parameters on how it's used. It can't supplant village budget monies. So it has to be used for, basically for the police department to help their efforts in future drug trafficking type of enforcement activities. So I did tell John and the committee members that I would come back to them when we have a really good idea of when the money's getting here and what we're going to spend it on. Or seek their approval. And then the Fireman's Festival, we met with the run organizer, parade organizer, and the Fireman's Festival organizers. We're all set on that with planning. I know at one point on unwanted prescription drug collection, Melissa called me and I gave her my reason why we don't have a drug collection box in the village. And I also brought it up at the law enforcement committee. And one of the big reasons is because all that, those drugs get collected in there and anybody can throw anything they want in there. And in this day and age with fentanyl requiring so little of a dose to overdose someone. And people misusing it by putting sharps in there and other unmentionable things. I, I have avoided it like plague here in the village because I had one in Milton. And the officer had to collect the drugs from there, sit in the department of classifying with a volunteer pharmacist. And the whole department would just fill with fumes and stuff from what was in there. So what happens throughout the year is Forward Pharmacy collects unwanted drugs. They keep them properly stored. And then in October and April, when the State Justice Department does that free collection, we hold that collection day. And whatever Forward Pharmacy has collected throughout the year, that's when we submit it to DOJ and DEA and get it disposed of properly. And then, what was the other one? Oh, we, we were going to do an evacuation drill at Glacial Drumland, but there was thunder and lightning that day, so they couldn't come out and play. But we are going to do that in September now that they're getting out of school this week. And then we have bike patrol. We have a bike that was donated by Sun Prairie Bike Shop. Sorry, I don't remember what their name was, but it's now been decalled. And the officer will be trained this summer on how to ride the bike like a policeman does. I guess you have to be certified, so. It has lights and siren on it, so if anybody wants to drive around at night, they're more than welcome.
Sign me up.
That was it?
Okay, and then we just had, the chief provided the department activity. We went through all that detective reports, various other reports, Canada report. Everybody's been very busy in all those areas. They went through that detail at a committee level as well. And we'll be coming up with the next month, maybe later this month. Chief, is there anything else to add? Yes, go ahead, Matt. Alright, what do you got on that, Nick?
Um, we met the, let's see, what day was that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Um, and we looked at the, yeah, the twenty-eighth. We looked at the bills and everything's right in line with where they should be. And we did get a monitoring report and everything's at zero. So no toxic stuff happening in the environment out there. It was a seven-minute meeting. It was pretty quick.
Pretty lively.
Next, next, yeah, right. Next time, July twenty-second, I believe, at six o'clock for anybody that wants to join.
Is that the normal day?
It's always paired up with.
Yeah, we moved it up.
Yeah, it's always paired up with.
Like Jeff's on that last one.
Yeah, man, out of town. I'm up in Denver that last weekend too. Oh, no. Up north.
Alright, and then move on to Joint Fire.
Um, so we met at six thirty on Tuesday after the riveting meeting of landfill. And Chris Hampton is the chair and secretary. We approved the HVAC repairs. It's quoted for, for all four, um, four machines. Four units. And then we are still waiting for quotes regarding the trims and lamps with LEDs, so we tabled that. We are not moving ahead of the Schindler, ahead cellular solution for the elevator. We talked about changing phone and internet service. And ultimately, Jeff, do you remember your motion? That was super long.
Oh, no, I don't. It was quite extensive.
Basically, the only issue that the Fire Department, well, that the EMS is having is with the voicemail. It doesn't work very well or it's spotty. And so we're looking into, currently we have Frontier. And so we're looking into if the voicemail can be changed or set up or somehow fixed. Since ours is so old, people with a pyramid, because it fits in with the phone lines and service in that building. And then there was an extra line that were, that nobody can seem to find where it went. So maybe get a refund from Frontier for that. So we'll be looking further into that. And we're also getting quotes about additional security lighting for the front of the EMS station. It is kind of dark in the front. Other areas are better lit. But there were a couple of concerns, so we'll be getting quotes for additional security lighting. And possibly like digital cards for entrance rather than having to change the key code all the time when there's turnover. We're at thirty-one members. Four completed the officer course. And they're building education within the department, so more people are learning more things and being able to develop further. So, yeah, we got a hundred and five calls, which is down a little.
Alright, then we move on to, I attend the reports of court officers. The one I had here is discuss and consider nomination, John Russell, to Joint Fire Committee Law Enforcement, that big monitoring review committee ordinance. The original list had vacant trustee. By default, that's where those slide, that was.
I'll move those for appointments.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Having heard them, all those in favor? Motion carries. Lee, it's your show again.
My report consists of this. Each year or each time there's an election, we have new members that come on to the board. Matt has the various department heads present and you have an overview on the village. But one thing that I'd like to just make sure that the board doesn't have a problem with is as individual members are assigned to these committees, then sometimes I will provide them with copies of applicable contracts. For example, Joint Fire has, John, you didn't even know it's like eight or nine, it seems like. And I just want to make sure that the board doesn't have an issue with me providing that information. It's certainly on public record. But then also if the person has, if the trustee has questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm going to keep track of that time so that I can report on that during the budget process. But I just wanted to make sure that you all know that there's nothing, there isn't anything secret going on that we can't talk about. And so I, I think that Joint Fire is probably one of the biggest issues. And E O C has been an issue, or at least, you know, there's some things to talk about. So I'll be happy to answer any questions people have as time goes on, just let me know.
And a lot of this communication mostly is business, considered approval vouchers. I had one question, so JD, you provided, still here, Inspector.
Yep.
Provided a amendment on the emergency main repair, a gas road that Houston's fortunately were able to jump in and fix. My question is, does that go back to the folks that actually hit that main or is because it wasn't marked?
That's most of the, we were, Jeff and I were talking, we talked a little bit with Lee, take a shot, but most likely ultimately that's probably going to be the deciding factor.
I kind of figured that based on your memory.
I believe Jeff called insurance, the, the. Um, there's any news that'll be good news?
Our, our insurance, our water mains are not part of the overall insurance package. And that's a best practice for municipalities because that would be real expensive to cover that. So they, they recommend that we annually plan for a certain amount of breaks, which we do. But in this case, where, where we should at least have a discussion with the con, with the contractor is a frustration in the sense that generally, this, this kind of work is not a, the utility is not concerned about, if, let's say they weren't able to get out there and locate, for instance, if they were contacted. The water main and sewer mains are eight feet deep. This, this work that they're doing is supposed to be like three to four feet deep. So what are, what are they doing? So maybe there's some negligence with that that, you know, could be looked into. But, and then having, it's also learning experience for Public Works that annually, they should be updating the map of all of our utilities with Digger's Hotline. This was a, I guess, in the same circumstance, being a water maintenance outside of village boundary that I guess fell through the cracks there, but.
Is this that rough patch too that's still not blacked out? Are they going to cover that soon?
We are, hopefully this week. I believe you guys got it socked out Friday, so it's a matter of getting out there in the middle of the morning, hopefully. Plans for this week, because sometimes things change. Technically, definitely next week.
That's the only question I have. Anybody else have questions on the vouchers, or is our motion approved?
Motion to approve the vouchers?
For a second.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? May we oppose? We abstain? Motion carries. For a conference. So the Columbia Club, which supports our seniors here, I think many of us already know this, but we in turn, as a community, support them. And they were kind enough, I think, to see what, who were able to go to this.
Sarah.
And Sarah, which was wonderful. They provided us with a plaque, and you can pass this around, you can put all your fingerprints on it and clean it off. And then we'll put this in the hallway after this. But that's very nice of them to do that. They certainly don't have to do that. We are appreciative of them. Certainly reaching out and providing services to our senior citizens indeed, or just either helping hand or meal or whatever. There's somebody to talk to sometimes. So that's, that's wonderful. And they had a nice event on May twenty-third, provided us with Sarah and Melissa with this, so.
They did also indicate that they are probably going to have to open up a second run out to Cottage Grove for their Meals on Wheels program. That the volume of meat out here has increased, so.
Unfortunately, we don't almost expect that these days. Good. So that was that. I don't think there's anything else I can give you. Alright, and upcoming community events?
We have Fireman's Festival and Sunday, Father's Day, the sixteenth, is the pancake breakfast.
The Optimists will be at the food stand Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at Fireman's Festival and Sunday afternoon.
And if I can ask, kind of related to that, Hydrate had their giveaway, I think, the last week of May, the twenty-third, if I remember. Was anyone able to attend that?
Yeah, I was there with Sean. I talked about it.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Okay, I missed that part, yeah.
Yeah, they, they donated to Parks Department and then also to Joint Emergency.
Emergency Government.
Emergency Government.
Yeah, I knew there's two thousand dollars coming to them, that's, yeah.
It was a, yeah, it was a very nice event. They presented to at least maybe a dozen organizations. Yeah, it was, you know, very nice. And then they sponsored the Music in the Grove that night and brought pizzas and they had volunteers there giving out pizza and cookies.
Great.
It was great. Uh, the Miracle League is going to have a fundraiser night with Madison Mallards. Where a portion of tickets sold with the correct event code. And when you purchase online, you can put in a little event code and three dollars for each ticket. Will go to the Miracle League of Dane County. The game's July ninth. So that will be circulating on Facebook, information about that. And they should then be able to announce their new home pretty soon.
And, and I know that the rugby folks are going to be hosting the Midwest Rugby Championship on the twenty-second and twenty-third. Anybody that went out there with weekend, boys state championship was held there as well as a number of other friend competitions. All fields were utilized and there were, there was no room. So I really need to see the Bakken Park come alive like that, so some good stuff there. Any other events there coming up? I know that the Brock Fire, Fire, something for the historical society coming up. I can't remember when that is though. I think it's later this month.
This isn't really a community event, but as soon as we're done here, I have cupcakes for the board and staff that remain as a celebration of my birthday, which I decided to spend with my second family. Chief told me to say that, so.
Oh, very good. Okay, future agenda items. We've got the usual suspects. And then we have the joint committees appointments. Lot of that on there. I'm sure we have other things circulating.
Yes, Eller's our financial advisor will be here to get authorization to pursue borrowing for the Cottage Grove Road Repave Project. So it's a, it's a two-step process where first he has to get authorization from the board to pursue the borrowing. And then there'll be a bond sale and then that gets approved at a subsequent meeting, usually, usually a month later. Maybe some, maybe some census agenda items.
The prioritization?
Yeah.
That's everything else I was going to say.
Do we have seats yet set for the repaving or, you know, when you're going to do that?
Set to start the AM partners from the year seventeen. Actually, what's starting is on August, we pulled the paving office out that morning, but we should see some action.
I think there's a tentative schedule posted on our Facebook page. So I can, just a second here.
I saw that getting shared on Facebook a lot, so it's good.
Then I'll be back to you folks.
Yeah, like JJ said, the seventeenth first start, and then there's substantial completion by August fifteenth. Final completion, August twenty-ninth.
It's raining.
Not done before school. Well, it's done before school.
All right, so then, I'm hoping this, make a motion to go into closed session. The bill that you have for the board will enter closed session, assuming Wisconsin State's actually. Now, 85 crimes, 11 people delivering and negotiating purchased public properties, investing public funds, and conducting other specific public business, whatever. Whenever competitive for bargaining reasons, we require closed session. This closed session is a negotiation, future comments, but, table number five. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and all those papers, oh, sorry, you gotta do both.
Allen.
Aye.
Limber.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Lucia.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Chronicle Central.
I haven't done this part yet, I just hold it.